All right, first up, we are going to get an update from Dan on the Employment Relations Board here.
Yeah, so earlier today, I emailed you a timeline of events related to bargaining with our classified employee group regarding the PERS redirect. And so, just to summarize, in July of 2019, Senate Bill 1049 changed some of how PERS conducts itself in terms of contributions, also in terms of work backs. And so, we had received a demand to bargain, as did every district in the state, after this law was passed. And basically, the demand to bargain was set aside while it was worked out in courts. The court upheld the law. And so, right after we concluded bargaining with our classified union last August, shortly thereafter, we received a demand to bargain regarding this PERS redirect. And I won't go through all of those various details there. I'll come back to a couple of them. In March, we received a notice from the Employment Relations Board regarding an unfair labor practice being filed against us for bad faith bargaining under the term that we engaged in surface bargaining. In other words, having no intent, I'm not a legal scholar on this, but basically having no intent to bargain is what my understanding of surface bargaining is. And so, we have the Hungerford Law Firm representing us in this matter. And we go to the Employment Relations Board, the hearing is this Wednesday and Thursday. And just a couple of the notes that I think are worth noting in terms of some of the claims of surface bargaining is there were some delays that were really unforeseen in September and October. And I don't think you need to go back in time to know what some of those were related to. But I would also state that we always met with the union. We just oftentimes needed to table the PERS part until our business manager could be there. There were also a couple of key things that we were successfully negotiated with our classified. We got an MOU regarding the wildfire emergency closure because of that. That was successfully bargained with our group. And we also had an informal grievance regarding an MOU from the initial closure back in March that had been lingering on. So there were some successful things that happened during the, I shouldn't say, there were more priorities. And I think it's also important to note that we are continuing to do what our contract says it's going to do, and that is contribute 6% of the PERS pickup to the Classified Association. What PERS does after that is really outside of our control. And, but we are still bargaining, which was our last proposal, was to continue to bargain this when we engage in successor bargaining, which is what we're doing right now with our classified employees. So we are still upholding our last proposal of, they've presented some proposals related to the PERS redirect, and we are still in negotiations over those. So that's kind of an overview of the situation. I just thought you should be aware that we are engaging in going in front of the Employment Relations Board Wednesday and Thursday this week.
Okay, so that's this week.
That's this week.
Can you define successor bargaining?
Probably not to the, it's, so in our last agreement, full agreement, we bargained a three-year agreement with a reopener, so the successor part, a reopener, related to salary insurance, and then both parties agreed that we could open two articles. So that would be successor bargaining.
Thank you.
Dan, what would be the possible remedies that the Labor Relations Board could, you know, if we were found to have engaged in surface bargaining?
I'm not, I think primarily just an acknowledgement of, I don't think there's any penalty, there's no penalty. But to, well, for one, we are doing exactly what we said we would do, is bargain over this matter. So I think that, I think, had, if we weren't bargaining right now, they could direct us back to the table. So I think that's the only penalty would be to direct us back to the table to engage in bargaining over this matter. But we are currently at the table with them, so I don't think there's any.
So I assume that you'll probably be sending an email once we hear back from, or?
Yes, yeah, or probably come back before you in public session and share that with you.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Next up, we are going to jump into our discussion items. The first of which is our first readings of several policies. I did not, actually, I'm not on the Zoom, do we have Dawn or, okay. So let's go ahead and promote them if we can. Oh, Dawn Tacker, if she's on, Dixon, if he's on.
Hi, Dawn.
Hey, how's it going?
Good. Thank you for joining.
Fantastic. Of course, happy to do so. All right, shall we do it as we did last time, just kind of run through them by one?
Yeah, I think that's great.
And Daniel, could you make sure to promote Dixon Bledsoe as well?
I'm not seeing him.
Don't see him, okay.
Okay, not sure, I actually didn't hear back from Dixon. Debbie, did you hear back? I'm not sure what his status is. But I'll just kind of take it and, you know, jump in with questions as always. All right, so first up is EEA. So as an aside, everything tonight, I'm using only five, right? We're taking it easy on you guys, but the five are all due to changes in law. So pretty straightforward, no major changes on any of these. The first one, though, does have to do with transportation. And again, this came out of two different Senate bills, 802, 905. So we're a little behind on this. This was, this update was released in 2019, so we're playing catch-up here. But anyway, no major changes, like I said, the only, I made it a little bit more readable by just adding bullets at the beginning. And that's really, it, there were some OSBA changes in here. We always do just a, you know, a slight change in language to kind of keep it updated. And that was about it. Do you guys have questions for us on EEA?
Any questions from any of the board members? Looks like we're good to proceed.
Okay, great, let me close these down, move on to the next one. So what have we got, personnel records. So once again, this was a different Senate bill, 155 in 2019. And just making changes around how we can use, store, and release personnel records. So protections for both employees and also for the district. We did compare it to our current policy, made very minor changes. There was some bracketed language that we had to choose, so we did that as a group, I believe. And yeah, that was it. So OSBA, the changes that you see, if you're looking at the multicolor version, those are all made by OSBA except for very, very small changes in language. Like, we always change shall to will. And the only other thing, yeah, just bracketed language in the last paragraph we chose. That was the only thing major. And again, that's always a choice, and we usually bring that to Dan and Scott and let them guide us on that.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Dawn, or Dan, or Scott on this matter? Okay, well, let's look at JEC.
Keep moving here, admissions. So this is an optional one, but once again, it's SB 802, 905 dictated that this has to change if we do have it. We do have one related to, this is JEA and JECA, we're going to talk about in a second. The major change on this one is that we found that the line that dictates age by the start of Kinder or, you know, the start of that school year was actually less clear in the new version, so we reverted back to the old one from the old policy. It didn't have any bearing on the content, it just made it a little bit easier to understand, I thought. There was also a footnote that we discussed and took apart. Just wanted to make sure it was the way we thought it should be. And actually, Dan is in good place to talk about that if you guys are interested, but basically had to do with official foster homes versus unofficial foster homes. In other words, parents maybe saying where their child lives. And again, this is all OSBA and due to these changes in laws that they asked us to make these changes.
Was, you know, I forgot to send you this. Was during the discussion, there any conversation about the content of this one? Or was it purely just the update from OSBA? Did you guys talk about it at all?
Nothing in the content was changed. So we had a question about footnote one, just to make sure that we understood it as a group. I found it really confusing. Dan has a great way of explaining things. Dan probably should have gone to law school, I think, but he's able to take this stuff apart and explain it, especially in context of legal changes. So no content in this one to even talk about. It was all given down from OSBA. And again, we just chose language that we thought was more clear.
We had a discussion about item number six, just to make sure there was clarity around that members of the work group understood what it meant. But there was, like Dawn said, this was pretty much straight out of OSBA's recommended language.
Right, okay. The reason I ask is that there have been occasionally some questions about that September 1st date, and I was curious if that was discussed. I should have sent that note off. You know, when I scanned over this, I somehow was just looking at the differences, and I forgot to ask that question.
You mean the September 1st for Kinder's to start?
Yeah, right.
It's in another policy.
That's what, okay, I thought that same thing, which is why I was, when I saw this, I thought.
That is in another policy, yes.
Okay. So this just talks about what, that state, it says state law requires students to be six on or before September 1st in their first grade.
My opinion in reading those two options, the one that you didn't select actually seemed to me to be more precise and clear about the calendar year that the child needs to turn six. I'm thinking that's probably why they drafted it, to replace, to replace the prior, because isn't that, isn't what's selected, you said you reverted back to what the policy was for?
Right, to the old policy.
It just makes me think that they wrote that because there was a question.
Yeah, let me pull that up on, let's take a look at that. Hold on one second, it'll just take me a second to pull this up. I've got about 20 tabs open. So if we go down to, oh, that's not going to do it. Sorry, it's hard for me to see on Board Book, so I always have my Google Drive open in the background here. So let me just pop it open here instead. Or if someone's got it open and they want to read it, have at it, so meantime, I'll pull it up on my screen.
Yeah, I can read it. So the, what was selected by the committee is this language. State law requires students to be age six on or before September 1 to enter first grade. And age five, on or before September 1 to enter kindergarten. The previous language was, a child is considered to be six years of age if the sixth birthday of the child occurred on or before September 1, immediately preceding the beginning of the current school term. Now, I just, I would assume that OSBA, that there was a problem in some district that that prior language was challenged, and so they rewrote it. I mean, that's an assumption, but I don't know why else they would redraft that.
Yeah, that's a good question, right?
But to me, the stricken language that you didn't select, I mean, just to my thinking, seems more precise.
I wonder if, I think the part that we found not ambiguous, but as, not as accessible in terms of language, if you know what I mean? Is that first part? And so I'm wondering if maybe you might consider, as a board, taking that second part, and again, I'm going to pull it up here. Okay, considered to be six years of age, the immediately preceding the beginning of the current school term, that kind of defines it, right? Because before, you're right, in the current policy, the language that we took, it's not exactly clear what year are we talking about.
Right, I mean, it's implied, but obviously, if it's only implied and not specified, yeah.
Right, so what, I mean, you know, again, this is your policy, so take a look and see what you guys think as a group. But I think maybe taking that last phrase, immediately preceding the beginning of the current school term with the language from the previous, the current policy, might make a better compromise there. But we're happy to do whatever, this is why we bring you these.
Why don't we take that with us back to the work group, and for whatever reason, it's not coming up on our screens.
Owen, are you reading off of JEC?
Yes.
So for some reason, Scott and I don't have JEC, any attachments under JEC. But Debbie does, and it looks like every, Tom, you don't?
No.
Because I was, I jumped all the way to JECA.
Oh, yeah.
I have it, but not marked up. And one thing, too, that I've noticed about this, sorry, this is kind of an aside, is that when you search on Board Book, sometimes the search function doesn't work, like right now. I am getting some things coming up. But the last, well, I can, I can talk to you about that later, sorry.
So I'd recommend tabling this and bringing it up at the next month's work session, because I'm not looking at JEC at all, so my last comments were about JECA.
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
It's a first reading, and that's why we do this. Okay, well, if we're going to table it, I think that's fair. Anything else before we finish tabling it? All right. Well, what about JECA? Is that tied, are they tied at the hip?
This is admission of resident students, so it's influenced by legislation as well, but it's independent of the one that we just looked at. It's related, it's all under admissions. So once again, we mostly were looking at bracketed language in this one. And the major changes were, OSBA added .6 and 7, which might actually have ended up being 5 and 6, depending on what your version looks like. But specifically, having to do with voluntary placing the child outside the child's home, and then also students who are military children. Those are new additions due to those two bills. Then in items, the last three items, let's put it this way, and on my document, they're numbered 8, 9, and 10. But there was just some bracketed language in number 8 and number 10. So again, on the cover sheet, it says 7 and 9, but it kind of depends on how it got renumbered on the version that you're looking at. But those are the only places for bracketed language. And we chose may versus will or will not, mostly because that gives the district a lot more flexibility.
So just to speak to that, so the previous language was that a student who was expelled for another student, from another district trying to enroll, policy said the board will deny, will deny access. And we changed that to may based on district criteria. My previous experience is when that happens, if that happened, when I was the principal of a school and a student wanted to enroll, we would look at the evidence of the expulsion and determine whether we would have expelled the student for the same offense or not. And that would be the determiner, whether we upheld the previous district's expulsion recommendation or did something different. And so, as a team, we felt like that flexibility was important to have in there. So we changed those, will deny admission to may based on a criteria.
Allows us to make the decision in the best interest of the child.
Thank you for that background. Any questions on JECA? Okay, how about JFCM?
Okay, so threats of violence. The, again, this was an OSBA change after reviewing statute. The, the major discussion that we had was this final paragraph, and we did recommend keeping it, but modifying the language a little bit. And there was just a little confusion in the group about types of notification, and we kind of, by talking through it, we understood where they were going with that. And basically, notifying parents of the child making a threat is taken care of in one section. But then notifying those who's, you know, who have experienced somebody else making a threat to them or against them is in a different section. So we just talked through that, made sure we all got it.
All right, any, any questions on this one? Well, I really appreciate you joining Dawn and helping walk us through it, and Dan and Scott, for some of the background. Really appreciate it. I like the fact that we're doing these three readings, it gives us plenty of time to mull things over, make sure that we have a chance to think about them, the public, if they realize something they want to share, they've got a couple of meetings that they can do that with as well.
I just wanted to thank Dawn again, and Dixon for their tireless work on this. It's a lot of work. And Janet Alanack has joined our group, and Tom and Lauren, we've also added Melissa Briggs as another community volunteer to help us. Melissa has a legal background as well, and want to make sure that she's connected to Silver Falls School District as well, and she serves on the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee as well. So we're happy to have her help.
Yeah, very good.
And if I can, if I can add my, I guess, support for Melissa, I mean, she's not only has a legal background, but she has a, she's just a superior writer and experienced in legal writing. And these being legal documents, I think that's, the expertise is going to be really helpful to us.
We agree. By the way, we have about 50 more on our backlog. We'll continue to have new policies coming up, but 50, at 10 a month, means five more months. So that's our goal.
Thank you, Dawn.
This is light month, yeah. All right, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, that's going to move us into our talk about superintendent evaluation timeline. And Jennifer, thank you, has offered to help us sort of talk through this and walk us through some of the options and the discussion points for tonight.
So I hope you've all had a chance to review the timeline from the 2020, 2021 year. The question, well, and also the superintendent evaluation workbook from COSA and OSBA. So the question that I have, as I look through this, I'm trying to figure out, you know, what needs to happen as we proceed for this year. Well, this, last year, we did part one from the workbook, that included the standards. And that's the only evaluation tool that we used. And one of the reasons why is because Scott joined us in July, and so we already had a super compressed timeframe. Because ideally, you would start as soon as the last cycle ends, which is, should be spring, right? And you should start with the new goals and a new cycle. Well, that can't happen if you don't, you know, superintendent's not starting until July. So we, this last year, we had a compressed schedule. At the end of the schedule, or the timeline, there was an attempt to get us back on to like a full year cycle so that those check-ins, right, four check-ins with the superintendent weren't compressed. However, this spring, we had some extenuating circumstances around the reopening that deprioritized that piece. And so, we're kind of back where we were last year. So the two questions that I have to start us with is, are we going to use part one this year? I'm assuming the answer's probably going to be yes, unless somebody has a different idea. And then the second question is, are we going to go to part two, which is where the superintendent develops goals, and we approve them, and use that as part of our evaluation cycle? And so that's on part two of that workbook. So that's the question that I have for all of us, and I have, we haven't talked, you know, in our meetings with Scott about this either, so give your input as needed. So basically, those, that's the first thing I think we need to determine.
And just so you know, as a board, I do have specific goals. I will be rolling those out at the Leadership Institute on August 10th. So whichever way you decide to go as a board, just know that I do have very specific explicit goals that you will all become very familiar with as we move forward as well.
Well, it sounds to me that then we should probably just include those.
Yeah, yes, I agree. Scott's been here a year, he's got to lay the land, now, now he can say, this is the goals and the direction I want to go, and we can agree or disagree with them on them and evaluate them, and evaluate them going forward.
So a question for Debbie then, and I'm sorry, because I had prepared, and I left my notebook at home. Where is the Leadership Institute in relation to our board meeting for August? Do we meet first?
Yes, the day before.
So then the question would be, do we want to approve those? Probably not, because that steals your thunder, right? So we could come into the August work session to approve, if that makes sense.
Well, it makes more sense to approve them after he's had a chance to talk through why they're as well.
What I'll say is none of them are earth-shattering. All of them are directly connected to the work we've done this past year, and so, and they're directly in line with our district strategic plan. It's just an operationalized version. And so, it should come as no surprise, but.
All right, so then the second question I have is, do we want to follow the same basic timeline that we had last year, that OSBA developed with us? And just, you know, put the appropriate dates from this year in there? And then that will, that could, you know, if we followed that process, it would get us back into this idea of a less compressed timeframe. Because for me, I know that as somebody being evaluated, it's way more authentic when it happens over a longer stretch of time than just that short window because the principal's got to get it done, you know what I mean? And so, I think, to me, that that would, that I would appreciate that as the person getting, you know, evaluated. So, yeah, this year, I don't think we have too much of a choice, because we still have to get the final evaluation done by spring, right? But looking forward, maybe that's something that we can try to get back on track. So any thoughts?
I mean, I, I agree. I guess those are my thoughts.
I mean, I, I agree. I guess those are my thoughts. I think, I think that having, following the, the OSBA outline went pretty well, except for the time period that got compressed and we didn't get the check-in that we had originally planned for.
Right.
But I do think that have, sorry, I'm relaxed. There we go. So I do think that there is value in, in trying to follow that. And I agree with what you said about having continual check-ins. You know, we, we do the same thing in my line of work. You know, we have a minimum of twice a year evaluation check-ins with one formal one. I think that's, you know, a, a good practice in general. So I guess I just agree.
Janet, Owen, you guys want to?
I would just say I would agree with your thoughts. I mean, I think you guys had the experience of going through that. So I don't have anything else to contribute, I guess, on that.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. I, I think the schedule, we haven't, like you said, we haven't really run the full year yet. So let's not deviate too much from what we were planning and let's kind of stick to that framework and, and see how, see how it goes. But yeah, I think that, that sounds good to me.
One thing I did want to point out that as I was reading through the workbook today, they talked about starting the new cycle before your budget process starts. And remember during the final evaluation, it was really hard for us to score. And Tom, you might remember this. It was hard for us to look at those standards and evaluate on the budget cycle because Scott hadn't been through that. And so that is, yeah, that's why they recommend getting that part done before the budget cycle starts. And but of course, that was impossible the, you know, last year. So. Then the last question that I have is that, you know, when we got trained on this, the idea was talking about one voice. It's not about averaging the collective scores. It's about everybody discussing and let's land on a number, right, as far as the, the levels of performance. And so my question is, do we want to plan for a facilitator? Because we did have a facilitator do that last year. Is that something we want to plan for? And if we decide that now, it gives us time to, you know, get those, that in place? Or do we not want to go with a facilitator?
I liked having a facilitator.
If I might be able to just add to that, and I, because I've said since day one that I prefer to have my evaluation done in public, not an executive session. I'm here to serve the public. That's where my evaluation should be done. And just the experience with the facilitator this past year, I thought was worth every penny. And, and because it keeps everybody focused, it takes the emotion out of it. It gives you one level removed that can have an objective view on trying to formalize what a summary is, what the summary will look like. So that's just, just my two cents there.
I agree.
I agree. I thought it was money well spent.
I agree. I think that this is one of the most, it is the most important thing that we do. And so having, and again, because we're doing it in public, having that person there just, just helps that, that discussion go more smoothly. So I would be in support of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, hearing you guys.
I'll just add super quick. Sorry. Yeah, I think, I agree. I think it was really, really helpful. And I wonder, you know, if this time, you know, they know this is our second time around doing this, they may, they may facilitate it somewhat differently. You know, maybe let us have a little bit more, more breadth to, to converse. I did feel sometimes we were sort of being kind of herded into a consensus, which obviously that's the ultimate goal. So that's, that's an efficient use of time. But, you know, there may be ways to say, okay, facilitator, we want your guidance again, but maybe, maybe we need a little bit of a long, longer range this time, you know, because we're not just kind of muddling through it. We're, now we're trying to really be really proficient and excellent at doing this on our own. And maybe we need different kind of guidance. So just a thought.
Yeah.
I would just say hearing your guys' endorsement of using a facilitator, I'm all for it.
One thing that I was wondering about too is like, which way do we want to go? We went with OSBA because OSBA was the creator of the tool, right? And again, trying to put myself in Scott's position, that evaluation cycle should teach me something, right? It should help make me be a better professional. And so that, I wondered about, you know, that process and how that serves Scott. And I'm wondering if we wanted to consider maybe a, a, a different angle as Janet proposed for the facilitator, like maybe somebody who's been an administrator before, so that they could help give that professional feedback as well. And I don't know if that's, if it's totally worthwhile or not, but I just wondered if we wanted to consider that.
I'm certainly open.
I'm fine with that.
I, I was thinking about Jerry because after that session that we had at Prattham not too long ago, and you were there and Aaron was there, Jerry's an amazing facilitator and has a ton of experience. And Scott could, you know, learn from him, you know, if we're having this discussion, you know. So anyway, just as a thought, we could, we can consider it. And yeah, just wanted to put it out there.
I think that's a, a good idea. But, and you're not saying that we think, you think we should hire Jerry to do that necessarily, but somebody like Jerry anyways.
Somebody like Jerry. That's a very good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, because ultimately, at the end of the day, what, what scores we allocate are kind of, you know, the, the first step of the process. I mean, at the end of the day, it's what's most helpful to Scott? What is the most meaningful feedback? What feels really actionable? What feels like something he can take away and do something about? And so if there was a way to have someone kind of translate some of the, you know, black and white standards and numbers of threes and fours and twos and say, hey, here's, here's how these might, might be translated to be more helpful. I think that's a good point. I think it's certainly worth exploring, Jennifer, to see if there's someone out there that we think would be a good fit. I think it's going to be as much a personality and an experience and, but I think it's certainly worth exploring.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I think that the last process, Scott clearly, because it was not an executive session and Scott was present, he clearly got to know how we felt according to the standards. But, but that actionable step, you know, that I'm sure he's very adept at, at reflecting and creating a plan. And perhaps there's somebody that could help, you know, take it one step further. So that's just, just a thought. And it may not work out, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah. I mean, with all good evaluation processes, he should be able to basically write his own by the time we meet anyway, right? Because he should know what we're going to say. Because we've already had checkpoints. We've talked with them one-on-one. We've, I mean, there shouldn't be any surprises by the time that day comes. So, yeah, I mean, anything that can help make that actionable and useful, I think is, is great. So what are the next steps then? It sounds like you've got some good feedback and, from us in terms of sort of how we feel. What do you see, Jennifer, as the next steps for us?
Well, I, I think we need to, and I don't know if I'm the best person or Debbie's the best person, or working together as a team, more of us working about just filling in those dates, you know, and making sure that that, we can update that timeline so that it makes sense for this upcoming year. And we need to approve the goals along with that. Yeah, I, I think we just need to get it on the calendar, like for August work session, right?
So if we could do both the goals and the timeline in the August work session, does that make sense?
Yep. To me, it does.
Does to me. It's a good topic for a work session anyway.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Any, any other conversation or, or discussion on this?
No, just other than that, I mean, this seems to be right in Jennifer's wheelhouse. And if, if she wants to look at and plug some, some dates in us for, to start the discussion, that'd be great. Because this is, you're like a dog with a bone. This is your thing.
Well, I, I just know that what it's like to have good evaluation versus not so good evaluation.
Well, I appreciate you doing. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks for trusting me.
Okay. So that moves us to the Board Superintendent Working Agreement. So part of the OSBA training that occurred after the hire of Scott included the creation of our superintendent working agreement. And that document is, well, essentially up for discussion and/or renewal. And so we should talk about it. Hopefully you've all had a chance to look at it again. And we should make sure that it matches what we would like. And I guess, Scott, I will ask you during this discussion to weigh in and make sure it meets your expectations, right? You've had a year to think about the topic. And, you know, we worked on it with OSBA. Our trainer helped us get to the point where we had consensus around the bullet, bulleted number, the numbered items that, that were included. And, you know, you guys have a chance to look at it. You have thoughts to share?
My first thought was I noticed all the shells. And I don't typically have a big problem with shells, but it's been said that that's the most litigated word in the English language. And I know that we've been, you know, changing that to will in, in, generally in the, in the rest of the policy. In some cases, it's been changed to May. But I think it's worth looking at that word and deciding if we actually mean must, if we mean will, or if we mean may.
Or endeavor.
Or may not.
Because we're not going to be perfect, right?
Yep.
So.
Yep.
I think that's a really good point that, that Owen brings up. It didn't occur to me, but one of the things I wanted to mention during this work session is that we have here in front of us an opportunity to enter into an agreement. It's not a binding agreement legally or anything like that, but nevertheless, it's an important agreement between us and getting the work done that needs to get done for kids. And unless we're going to adhere to this and make a conscious effort to make sure that we are honoring this agreement between the seven of you and the office of the superintendent, then I don't see a reason for it unless we're going to commit to it. Yes, we've had this displayed on the screen before every board meeting, although I doubt anybody's ever read it, that we've never brought this up last year as examples of what we do when we come together and we agree on things. I want to just impress upon the board that if we enter into this agreement that we make it an actionable document, that we actually go back to it and revisit it frequently. And going off of what Owen just said, really operationalizing the vocabulary to say is it will, is it may, may not, is it must. But that's what can separate Silver Falls School District from every other school district in Oregon, that we make really good use of our agreements. Because prior agreements prevent later misunderstandings. And so it's really important that we understand where, where we stand on a number of topics. So I just wanted to add that if I could. But it falls right in line with what Owen was just saying.
Yeah, no, it's a great point.
I agree. And I think that we had good intentions after we had the training and this was developed to go the next step. But then things just didn't work out. And so maybe that can be our next step is to, A, you know, if we're going to agree to this, let's agree to it. But then we need to figure out a way to remind us every meeting about what the words are. And, you know, really like recommit to it.
And, you know, I, I don't typically use sports analogies. I, I love sports analogies myself, but I know not everybody shares that appreciation. But there's a reason why Major League Baseball players start out with the ground ball every day during warmups. And it's because it grounds them in the fundamentals of why they are there to play baseball, but to base their mechanics off of fundamentally proven things. And so what I would like to ask the board to consider is that at least for two sections of this, there are seven items that we read before every board meeting. Because what that does is it models for the public what it's like to operate at a professional level. And these types of things are important. There's a reason why in whatever society you might belong to, or a book club or something else, all meetings start out the same way. And it's really to reaffirm our commitment to work together. But maybe even more importantly than that, it's to model for our public. And we know that we have diversity of thought here in Silver Falls. But to model for our public what professionalism and constructive conversation actually looks like and feels like. So that would be my ask of the board to consider that. To give you an example, every single admin meeting, administrators, when we meet, we meet once a week for 90 minutes. Every single Wednesday, well, we have, we're deciding what day of the week that'll be this year. And we have seven norms. And without fail, the first three minutes of every single meeting, one of the administrators reads the norms. And we ask if everybody agrees every single time. So when we get to the end of the school year, there have been 35 or 40 readings of those norms, but that we also revisit them and operationalize them. So if we need to enter into a difficult conversation to say, when we say united front, that's our first norm as administrators, we are united front. We can debate things in a spirited manner, but when we're done, we all get behind the decision. That if we need to have conversations, we can then tie it back to our norms. So if there's a violation in the norm, we need to come back to it as a group. And I would just like to say that we model that same type of professionalism for our public.
So I, I think I see two separate but important conversations to have, right? One is, do we want to keep the working agreement items that we established last year or make changes to this document? And the second discussion is, what does it look like? Do we want to consider Scott's proposal of reading at least a portion of this document at the beginning of each meeting? Sort of separate but important discussions. And I'd like to, I'd like to first have conversation. I, what, I'll, I'll set the stage. I'd like to bring this back as an action item in, excuse me, August's regular board meeting. But I'd like to discuss it tonight. I mean, this is our chance to talk about it. So do we like the content? Do we want to see changes? And do we want to make wording changes, right? Are there things we want to do to it? And then secondly, do, what, what does it look like? Do we want to read it at the beginning? And I'd like to have board conversation about both. But first, I want to focus on the, what is the, what, what's in it, right? Anybody have any thoughts or concerns? We'll start big picture and then we can wordsmith if people would like to.
Well, I'll just start real quick from a big picture standpoint. I completely agree with what Scott said. And, and, you know, you guys know that I've always just been really excited and committed to us really working on being our own learning organization and, and becoming a really high functioning board. I think there's a, an opportunity for us to really demonstrate that, that board work is not, not confined to, I mean, I sort of look at ourselves as, as our own little ecosystem where we can do our own improvement and our own learning and our own work. And this feels like the fundamental, the sort of the, the, the foundation for that. And it would be really exciting to, to take this as kind of a springboard and say, what does this allow us to identify as a group to say, what are we doing well? Where could we improve? What practices should we look at adopting? Because it will make us a stronger group. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm obviously rabbit trailing a little bit, but my point being that I think this is really good. I think it's strong. I don't have any issues with it from a, from a high level at all. And I think it's a really good foundation for us.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I, I would agree with Scott on the topic of considering this an actionable document, you know, a governing document, even though it's, you said it's not, you know, legally binding agreement. So I don't know exactly how we, how we do that to say it's not legally binding, but it is, you know, actionable and binding. It's something, it's a standard that we hold ourselves to and we hold each other accountable to. So. I also wonder if we, say we need to, but I, one piece that I thought we might add would just be a joint covenant of good faith. I think that's implied, but to state that might be worthwhile. And the idea of good faith and fair dealing, it's, it's that, you know, there's a whole, I guess, a bunch of things that would include, be included within that, but it would be, you know, include the idea of no secrets and being forthright and, you know, trying to work together towards the common goals that we have.
So what would that look like in terms of modifications to this document, or is that a separate concept?
No, I think that would be just an additional, in fact, it might even be, it might even be, you know, the first thing that's stated after collaborative governance, just to state that our joint commitment to, you know, good faith and fair dealing in this relationship. But that's as far, that's as far as my thought process has gone at this point.
You know, we talk a lot about, and I, I don't know when we coined the phrase hashtag no surprises. That isn't written anywhere. It's here under we don't surprise each other, but that whole phrase is something we use regularly, and that is something that I've been enormously appreciative of this past year, that I've not been surprised, and I hope you can say the same thing. But having a statement, as Owen suggested, I think it's just terrific in terms of saying that we honor our agreements. When we say we're going to enter an agreement, we honor that agreement. And that just serves to model for our other leaders in the Silver Falls School District and for our staff, how important it is, and when we say we're going to do something, that we follow through.
I'm certainly open to the idea.
I don't think you can argue too much against that.
No, I like the concept of adding a statement like to Owen's and reading those at the beginning of every meeting, I mean, I do.
So, I'll ask it kind of in reverse then, are there any of the items that are currently in there concerning to anybody? So we'll start with that question.
Not to me, without getting into wordsmithing. I just went through all seven of them and thought, well, would I put in the word will, may, must, you know, what would I do? And so, one, two, and three, I thought, this is just my thinking, I didn't, I wasn't involved in, you know, developing this with y'all, but my thought was those first three are probably wills. And then the fourth one is probably a may only, so the board may only make decisions at properly called meetings. And then, number one below communications, I thought appropriate would be must or will. Number two would be will, yeah, will or will only, something to that effect. And then the third one would be a will or a must. The idea with a must is, is it connotates there's some compulsion behind it. It's a little bit stronger than will. You know, legally, it's probably not a whole lot different, but it does have that additional connotation.
Especially when you consider number three under communication agreements, the strength of a word must, that it forces us to communicate with each other, maybe even when we don't want to. Because those are the uncomfortable conversations that still must happen.
Yeah, because if I put the word will in number three, then that to me, I don't know if that means will, must, or if it means may, in that context, in the context of that particular spot.
Or sometimes they're always.
Or sometimes they're always, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I agree that number three is a big thing. I think that's an important one to be clear on.
So, would, does everybody agree, and maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but that number three would be, under communication agreement, would be the appropriate word would be must?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you must do that.
How about under number one on the communications agreement, board members shall follow the chain of grant, board members must. I think, for me, must is what I would like to see there.
I have no concern with a must there at all.
I do, now, a words, another wordsmithing thing on this, I don't love the term chain of command. And I've seen, I've talked to Scott and Dan about this before, chain of responsibility to me is more, I guess, inclusive of the term, because leadership is about having responsibility, and it is a, usually a privilege to command people when you're the one that has the ultimate responsibility. So that's just the wordsmithing thing that I would, I would, you know, propose.
So something with basically the same, the same literal meaning, I guess, but using a different phrase, or terminology.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We have an expectation of our leaders in Silver Falls. We have a saying that we are responsible for, not in charge of. And so responsibility to us as leaders means we take responsibility for those, the care of those we lead. We don't just tell them what to do, but we actually care about their professional well-being, and we expect them to make us better as well. So if that fits, I'm just offering that in context.
Sure.
I like that.
You know, I think as long as it's clear what the intent is, right?
Yeah.
I mean, chain of command, I think, is a euphemism at this point. It just sort of means something originated, I'm sure, in the military.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I think chain of responsibility or some other equivalency, I would certainly be fine with.
So then, under communication agreements, number two, when you get to board members shall communicate directly, there again, the idea is that we're not going to bring something that's going to, you know, drop a bombshell that was unexpected here on the superintendent, but that we're going to communicate in advance, right? I mean, that's...
I think that's the idea. I've actually struggled, of all of these, I've struggled the most with number two, because I'm the kind of person that's cued in, in conversation. And so, like that policy, I read all of them ahead of time. Didn't, it wasn't until we were talking about it that a bunch of different thoughts came into my head. I want to make sure we're not, you know, tiki-tacky to the point where we can't have, I mean, we're supposed to have dialogue together, and outcome of dialogue is often thought, right? So, that one of all of them has always been my biggest concern, only because I, I think I tend to feel guilty when I think of something, and then I'm thinking, do I want to say so? Because am I, you know? So I want to make sure we're not leaving board members unable to think and have conversation.
Yeah. I think part of it too, Jonathan, because when you brought up your questions, I know you so well, because, I mean, you and I have worked together for, through so many complicated issues this, this school year, and we talk so darn often, that I already, I can already hear you asking that question anyway. So, and I think the more we get to know each other, the much better I'll be able to predict where each of you are in your thoughts on each policy. It may sound strange, but that, it's my job to know where each of you are relative, relatively speaking. And I certainly wouldn't want this to be a barrier to conversations we have in public. I think on the, on the, on the topics where we think the public really needs clear, thought-out answers, that that would be the responsibility of the board to inform me of those questions beforehand, so I can give thorough answers. Because not to be able to be asked that question and not to be able to answer it thoroughly, I think does a disservice to our work. And the same would go for me. If there was something that I needed you to know beforehand that was a sensitive topic or something you needed some context on, I certainly wouldn't want you to feel that you were freestyling. We use that word in our admin ranks. Wouldn't want you freestyling on a topic that you didn't feel comfortable being able to collect your thoughts first and give a thorough answer.
So Jonathan, I kind of thought the same thing, and that, when I was looking at what word, I actually thought the words maybe would be, instead of shall there, it might be may when appropriate, with the idea that if you have that covenant of good faith as kind of this umbrella, that that would, you know, work together to prevent, you know, surprises.
What about the idea of shall endeavor to, or something that's sort of...
Like that.
It implies, you know, an intent, but it doesn't preclude somebody from coming up with something.
Yeah, like today I asked Dan about that, that one word, you know? The, to define that bargaining word.
Right.
And, you know, I didn't ask him that ahead of time, but hopefully it wasn't too surprising.
But I, no, but I think that, I think that this conversation is, you know, like, I didn't anticipate Owen's question, but I didn't feel like I was surprised by it either. It's a relevant question, given the context of something going before Herb. So I didn't feel caught off guard by any of those questions. And I obviously gave you a lot of lead time to be able to ask me any of them anyway. But I, so, I think that it's one of those feeling kind of things, that, you know, whether you go with shall endeavor or will, I don't think you're ever going to land on the right thing until one of us feels like we were surprised. And then, back to the umbrella term of operating in good faith and under best intentions, that we, we are able to communicate that, you know, that, that felt like a gotcha, or that felt like a surprise, or something like that. And if you have trusting relationships, you can do that.
Right, that goes back to some of the others.
Number three, yeah.
So, I don't think you could search forever for the right phrase, but it'll still come down to a trusting relationship that feels like any one of the questions that I was asked, and my felt fair and not surprising.
Well, should there be like another statement at the end of that, you know, that basically says, good answers, you know, a good answer requires some research or some, something, you know, trying to distill down your thoughts, Scott, where you said, you've said that if the public wants a good answer, I might need some time to look into it a bit. I don't know.
Well, and it's not just the superintendent either, it's the board chair, because the board chair doesn't want to be surprised either.
Right, nobody, right, right.
And so that's just something to keep in mind. But I did want to underscore Dan's comment about, it's really about the conversation before the written word that makes this super meaningful to us, so that's something we should just continue to remember.
So, I heard a couple of different suggestions. I have a suggestion, Owen, if you're willing, you know, you've been taking notes here.
Yep.
Would you be willing to put together a draft modified version of this document to bring back at our regular meeting in August?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Owen.
So, I, sorry, back to the notes that you originally had started with. Did we get, we didn't get through, I think, all of...
We didn't get through all of them. I guess we'll work our way back then. We got through the bottom three, I think.
Right.
How about number four, working backwards? I thought this one would be a may only.
Yeah.
I like may only.
Okay. And then number three, well, number one, two, and three, I just thought will was most appropriate there, but if anybody thinks differently or has discussion about those.
Will works for me.
I would just add, in number one, we, you might consider, we might consider, you know, members of the board and the superintendent must work together as a team, modeling a willingness to learn together. It's just something for your consideration. There will be times where there will be disagreement, I'm sure of it. We have some really smart people here who have strong feelings about certain things, and that is always a good thing, when we're trying to do what's best for the community's kids. But that never excuses us from not working as a team. All high-functioning teams argue all the time. It's what they do as a result of it that truly matters. Because having a tough convers, or a spirited conversation, and then, for lack of a better word, getting butt hurt by it, and then remaining silent increases passive-aggressive behaviors, and then we do not act as a team. So, that's just something for your consideration. I really think it's important, especially in this day and age, in this time that we're living in, that we make every effort to model for our community what healthy conversation and healthy professional relationships look like. And we have an opportunity to really set ourselves apart from other school districts that neighbor us.
Yep, it's been a wild year already.
I'm okay with must there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have any objection to that.
And I like the team emphasis, because we are asking our teachers to work as a team, because that's the highest leverage point that we have for improving student outcomes. So, to me, it makes sense that it's from the top.
Top down?
Yeah.
Okay. There were two other things that I heard come up. One of them was Owen, well, it wasn't just Owen, but I think you recommended it first, was the idea of another bulleted numbered item under collaborative governance, which is the good faith item. So if you were going to put a draft together, I would trust you to put a draft together for that.
I'll come up with some, some language for that.
And then Tom had the idea of tacking something on to the end of communications number two, which was to, you know, point out essentially a summary statement of why number two was important.
The idea being that we understand that good, good responses takes preparation.
Yes.
Right. Anything else about the board portion of the document? Anybody else have any additional ideas or any suggestions? Scott, are there any changes you want to see regarding the items for which you got to choose when we put this together?
No, I, I've read through them all, and, nope. And I would just draw attention to the first and the fifth, and those, to me, are probably the most important, the willingness to share in the successes and the failures as a team. And number five, of course, we've been practicing all year, and I think we've been doing a good job, which is avoiding the surprise items at board meetings. With the type of year we had, I thought that was a really good test of that, and I just want to express my sincerest thanks to you all.
And I would only suggest that if we change chain of responsibility, that, to change it there, and number two as well. Are we down at the superintendent's expectations of the board, down at the bottom?
Oh, got it, yeah.
And number two.
Number two.
Number two in the last section, yeah.
And Debbie, you can send me a Word copy of that? Great.
Perfect. And so, for the board's expectations, we will be bringing this back as an action item in the next regular meeting, and expectation of adoption, of course, that night. So, now, as far as opening salvo at the meetings, the recommendation that we read the communication agreement and the collaborative government agreement lines, that would be eight total, based on our current discussion of changes, and what do people think about that?
The way that I kind of envision it, maybe to help a little bit, is that the board chair, before the meeting, would just choose one of the other members to read. So we don't make a huge deal, it doesn't need to be each person takes a line, or, we don't need to all read it at the same time, but that Jonathan makes a decision on, hey, Jennifer, would you like to read the, whatever we'll call the agreements tonight? And so...
I would probably do so ahead of the meeting, just as an F1.
Yeah, just as an F1, ahead of the meeting is what I meant.
No surprises.
That's what I meant, ahead of the meeting, yeah. Instead of surprising somebody with it.
Right. That would certainly make sense to me. I, I would appreciate not doing it every time, and I think spreading the wealth makes sense anyway, as you alluded to with your, your meetings.
And that would be myself included, so one of the meetings that I would certainly
Perfect.
love to do that.
Yeah. I'm certainly open to the idea, and I think, Scott, you've convinced me that there's a lot of value to it, so I don't have any concerns personally.
But it's something that we can, we can do and see, see how it feels too. See how it, yeah.
Any concerns? Okay. That's not really an action item, that's just part of sort of setting together a meeting agenda, and we'll take care of that at our. Probably we'll begin after we have approved the updates, so probably we won't read one at the next meeting. Soon.
Thank you.
Okay. Then that brings us to four D, which is our public comment statement. So this is the statement that is read by the board chair prior to the first public comment. This was put, just for some background, this was put together, I wanna say about five or six years ago originally. I think, I think it was there, I, well, I know a version of this was there before I was even on the board, so.
It was tweaked a little bit.
It has been tweaked, you know, right. So, we are here to talk about whether we wanna see any additional tweaks or changes, or anything of the nature.
One, one thing I've noticed that I don't know that we're doing consistently is asking folks to identify their name and their address, their relationship to the district, and then the subject of their, sort of the, the general subject of their comment ahead of time. And I think even if they say, 'cause some people, it's so relaxed, some people just say, oh, I signed up, I signed up in the back. And I think for the record, we have to be a little bit more disciplined about having them identify who they are, and, and sort of what the subject matter is. I think it helps keep it a little bit more organized.
I would agree, and I think a lot of it was just turned upside down when we went to Zoom. I mean, everything changed, so getting back to that would be nice, actually.
Right, for a while I stopped saying, please be certain to sign in before you present, because it felt silly to say it while we were on Zoom.
Right.
So.
Right.
And I would assume that there will be individuals, or even board members, still utilizing Zoom. I mean, and so to have that established, either or, would be a good thing.
Now that we're recording all the meetings, is it necessary that we have them sign in, as long as they're stating their name and, and, you know, address?
That's a good question.
Right.
One of the questions I wondered about is follow-up, because one of the, one of the things that makes the public comment awkward is that, you know, we try not to respond, because we don't wanna, we wanna be consistent, right? But sometimes there's misinformation that comes up, that we're gonna want the superintendent to refer back to that person. And in today's world, we usually use email to do that, or phone number, and so, I don't know, I don't wanna make a proposal, I just wanna bring that idea up, so maybe other people have, you know, can think about it too.
That's the exact question that I was hoping we'd be able to actually talk about, and it didn't come to me earlier, but, you know, when, and that's just a question, when is it appropriate for either a board member
Exactly.
or one of the staff to respond to the public? So, thinking back to my previous time on the board, there were, a lot of times it was misinformation. It was people that would come, they'd be upset about something, they would state a whole line of things that they're upset about, much of which was, you know, just factually incorrect. And then, you know, one of the board members would typically, in that situation, respond, or ask the superintendent to respond right then and there, because without doing that, you know, if you went back and, and had a private email with the, with the speaker, then everybody else who heard that
Doesn't get the
alleged facts, you know, they don't get the, the correct information, so. How do, do we have a policy on that, or do we, you know, so play it by ear? I mean.
I, I think you gotta play it by ear, because if you, it, it's supposed to be a meeting in public, not a meeting with the public. And, and when, and if we get in the habit of responding, then we're having a meeting with the public. And that, and then it just goes on and on and on, and, and I, and it's a, I don't, it's a, it's, it's a tightrope. And I really don't know the right answer to that.
Do, conversely, we also had a situation where a student gave a pretty emotional, or what, what should have evoked some emotion to anybody listening, a statement, and then there's like not really a response, right? And so, I, I think maybe the chair has to have some kind of leeway in terms of responding appropriately in those situations.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know the exact answer, but wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, hence, rarely will you get, get a response, but you, but you will. And yeah, I would give the chair, or Scott, leeway, or the vice chair, you know, just use, you, use discretion, I guess, use your, use, use our judgment, you know, kind of a thing. But, but just remember, it's not a meeting with the public, it's a meeting in public. Because, you know, early on when I was on the board, yeah, it was, there was some back and forth, and it was just, it just spiraled.
Yeah, and why does some, why does one person get a response, or somebody else doesn't get a response? I mean, I think that, to me, is really hard.
Yes, very, yeah, very hard, yes.
Like, just because you know that person, you're gonna give him a response? You know, what if it's somebody you've never heard of before, and, you know, then you're not gonna give him a response? So anyway, I just, it's, discretion, I think, is huge, but the more we talk about it, maybe we can land on something that seems to describe what we
I agree. There have been times when I have gone out of my way to hit the mute button, I don't know how many times, because I wanna say something. I mean, people come forward, and in some cases, and I know which one you're referring to, I was crying. I literally had tears down my face, and I thought, I should be able to say something back, in, in some, to comfort, whatever, and is that appropriate, and are we allowed to? But there have been a few where I have just wanted to say something, and then
I totally get it.
Yeah, but other times, it just feels almost dispassionate, and like we're unplugged when we don't say something. In some cases, do you know what I'm saying?
I know.
And not, and, and I'm talking more about compassion. I am not talking about, no, that's not right, my house is red, not blue, you know, blah, blah, blah. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about when people come forward, and they're sharing something that's really affecting them in the moment, and we say nothing. It makes no sense to me, but if that's what is expected of us, I don't wanna step over that line and just go rogue. But there are times when I do.
So Lori, I've got a couple of thoughts on that.
Yeah.
One is, I think when we're on Zoom, and we were all separately on Zoom, it makes that even more complicated.
Right.
Because you almost have to, you know,
Raise your hand.
raise your hand, or just start speaking, and then there's a delay, and are you talking over somebody else, and, right? It's more, if somebody was sitting right there, and
Yeah.
we, we all could gesture and say something, thank you, oh my goodness, yeah, you know, all of those things could happen, very sort of subtly, whereas on Zoom, I think it's really hard.
Oh, I agree.
So that's my first thought.
Yeah.
The second is, it's, there's a distinction, I think, between a thank you, even a thank you with some, I'll call it compassionate empathy, right, some kind of a thank you
Right, right.
and a response, right? Those are different things.
Right.
And I think as long as we're careful in how we respond, saying thank you, or, you know, again, showing some kind of empathetic response, makes a lot of sense. It's different than getting into a discussion,
Well
or it's different than telling the person how you completely agree with everything they said, and here's why, right? Those are, now you're, now you've probably crossed the line, but
Right, right, right.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So those are my, I guess, the two thoughts, as you were saying that, that kind of came to mind.
And, and I'm not opposed for board members, just, and Scott, I need to hear this from you, to turn to the superintendent and say, would you be willing to reach out to this person? And maybe discuss the minutia surrounding this, or whatever. And because I, I personally appreciate people coming forward, if it's happy or not, but I believe they deserve an answer, not to just not have anything in their response. I think that's just part of the integrity and respecting the public and the community that supports the district, so.
I think when questions, I think when questions are asked, we're pretty good about getting back to them. I think sometimes there's no question asked, right? It's simply a statement of satisfaction or dissatisfaction.
Right.
And there, you know, there isn't necessarily an actionable item out of it.
No, no. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Well, I think we could take each one in context. I mean, certainly, you know, there are questions that could be asked where an answer just would not be possible.
Right.
And of course, you know, there are so many things that we'd like to see come to fruition in Silver Falls, knowing that we can't do everything at once. So I, I also feel that the more you get to know me, the more you'll know, you know, sort of, what I'm able to answer and what I'm not. I, one of the things that I appreciate so much is how much I talk to you as a board each week. And the, the email updates, that's just written communication. I mean, the real talking on the phone, or, you know, the, the calling me for a quick question, things like that, that you, you really do a great job of reaching out, and, and of course, you know, I have as a, take as a matter of great pride getting back to you as soon as possible, so. And I would say that it would be no different for a member of the public. They are entitled to an answer, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
One, one thing that I would encourage you to do is if somebody is presenting something that, you know, oftentimes it's not really even board business, sometimes it is, but sometimes it's not, right? And so, but if, if, you shouldn't hesitate to say, hey, you know, just to, you know, I'd like to say, even if all you say is, you know, Mrs. Jones, I, I'd really like to get back with you on that matter, and, you know, I mean, something that shows sort of that level of engagement, right? I wouldn't hesitate, you know, if you feel a hesitancy, don't, I guess, as well.
Well, I, I appreciate that too, Jonathan, I, I really do. I, I think it's, it's good for me to hear that, and to hear, you know, that, you know, you giving me that permission, since I do treat these meetings as, you know, the board chair runs the meetings, and, and so I appreciate hearing that from you.
Yeah, no, I don't think we'd ever, at least I'll speak for myself, I would never turn down if you had something that you, again, avoiding getting into a debate or dialogue, but if you had something you wanted to add or say, I would certainly encourage you to do it. As chair, I certainly would do the same if I felt it was pertinent. Now, as far as the actual document that's read, again, it's been tweaked a few times. This isn't, this isn't policy, this is just, it's just a blurb that the chair reads to help sort of set the stage for public comment, to remind everybody that, you know, we'd like you to model your behavior, you know, right?
Right.
That, that kind of thing. So, there, there's kind of two conversations happening here. One is sort of around public comment in general, and I think more specifically, there was some question around the actual statement, which, you know, I'm happy to make tweaks to, and I'm perfectly happy leaving it essentially the way that it is, but I'm, I guess I would look to you guys to be very specific in terms of recommendations there.
Before we move too much further, I wanted to make sure that Janet had a chance to chime in, 'cause we haven't heard from her for a while.
Oh, no, thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, no, the only thing I was gonna say with regards to the previous conversation was, I think, and, and correct me if, if this isn't how you wanna go about it, Jonathan, but it seems that if one of us is particularly moved, or inspired, or concerned about someone's public comment, and wants to be sure that they're, they're going to receive a response, or there's gonna be follow-up, I mean, I, for me, I would just email Jonathan and Scott and say, hey, just wondering what the outcome of XYZ situation is, because it really resonated with me, and I'm concerned about it. And I think if we're all kind of keeping an eye to, making sure we're all kind of on the ball, then, then hopefully that also adds to the kind of taking responsibility for, for, you know, making sure people are heard, and, and that their, their concerns are respected.
Yeah, very good, good point.
Okay, so moving on to your next question, the one thing that was going through my mind is that we should probably expect that these meetings will be hybrid in nature, because we had tremendous increase in attendance when we started the Zoom meetings, and wait, who knows if that's gonna hold or not?
Right.
But I think more people will choose not to be in the audience and give their public statement on Zoom. So, I don't know if that would
Right.
be a different context that, you know, the statement might have to change for.
I liked Janet's idea of, well, she talked about essentially stating their, you know, name and relationship to the board, or something to that effect, right? The old signup sheet, I think it had your name and address, I think is what it had. And so, I like the idea of modifying this as well, and maybe encouraging somebody to do a, for the record, my name is, and here's my relationship to the district or the board.
Yeah.
That, I think, would be smart. I think getting rid of the please be certain to sign in is probably appropriate at this point.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, whoever said it, these are all recorded, so if they state it, it's on the record, we have it. Debbie's also always got it in the minutes, right? So who, who spoke and what were
Is it though, I heard it said once, that just 'cause it's on the mark, what, what happens in the meeting is what's in the minutes. You know, and the sign-in sheet, that written sign-in sheet, that becomes part of the minutes, not the verbal part.
That's a good point.
So I don't know if that technically just saying it on, even, even, even though I obviously agree, here, here's my name, here's where I live, I think that, to me, it covers it, but legally
Well, what, she always puts it in the minutes. My question is, if somebody's on Zoom,
Yeah.
there's no
there's no way to make them sign in.
Right, correct.
Well, and isn't the purpose of the address to make sure that they're residents of the district, so that we don't have people trying to influence from other places?
I think so.
Right.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I just, I just heard that, I, I've heard that statement before, where, well, it, it, it's on camera, it's recorded, and it's like, well, no, it's not. Technically, the meeting is what's in the meeting minutes.
Yeah.
So I'm just splitting a hair there, but maybe.
I think as long as Debbie records that in the meeting minutes, and that, that we ultimately approve.
So-and-so, so-and-so from so-and-so's.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure that, yeah.
So then it is important, it is important that we make them state that then on the record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I like that change.
Yeah, I like that too.
Yes.
I don't like the language in here. It's just been, I always thought it was confusing to people, and, you know, so often you give the blank stare, and they just are like, well, what's next, you know, and we've all experienced that. It says, so the board's role during public comment is to listen and gather information. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. That's the confusing sentence to me.
Yeah, it is.
I think it should say, rarely will you get an immediate response from the board, you know, to your comments.
I think you could just say period.
Period.
Rarely will you get a response.
Yeah, yeah. And I like how Tom, and I think people are thinking, why, well, why won't the board engage with me? Why won't they answer my, some people come and they say, well, I wanna know what each one of you thinks about, you know, you'll get that kind of a question, right?
Right, right.
And I like what Tom had said about this being a public meeting, but not a meeting with the public, and so, I don't know if there's something that we could help to get that concept, 'cause this doesn't really give you any of the why, it just kind of tells you the way it is. I don't think it needs to be any really longer, but maybe just a little bit more direct.
Well, who, who wrote the, there was a longer one, I think on our, on Board Book, it's called the Updated Draft. So that looks new to me. Is that something that somebody has recently worked up? Or, 'cause there are parts of that that I actually like, and I was going to, I was going to offer to work with, if, if you guys wanted us to, to work with Lori, to maybe kind of take, pull out some of these thoughts on the updated draft and integrate them, and maybe, I think it's too long, but if we took kind of the salient points that helped people understand a little bit more what the process is, and to Owen's point, why, you know, why we have the rules we have.
Right.
I'd certainly be, be happy to do. Um, I'd certainly be, be happy to do that with Lori, if that's something that, that you guys would like.
Uh, I'm fine with that, that sounds wonderful, yeah.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
I trust your judgment and, um,
Yeah.
I think that's a good plan.
Lori, is that the updated draft, that's what you submitted, correct?
Yeah, and it was basically just to have everybody, um, weigh in and say, what is it that we like? And what, what we're doing right now, actually. Do you want this or do you not? Yeah, so edit at will.
Are there, are there certain paragraphs here that, um, in the updated draft that people, that we wanna highlight that you, you all think are particularly important to include? And I can just make a note of that, so that we, um, we do that?
Well, I, I mean, there would be some things. Certainly the statement that I read or that the chair, whoever the chair is reads, would be, you know, we want that to be reasonably concise, right? So there's, as you said, you'd wanna pull points out of this. The, uh, I'm just re-scanning it here. I, I think if you wanted to take a crack, or the two of you wanted to take a crack at, at drafting a document that is, you know, readable, it, I think it's also okay to have a document. So, so we've got the public comment policy that I think, don't you normally put that on, or used to anyway?
It's a linky document.
Right. So it gets put, Debbie often puts that on Board Book attached to the public comment.
Okay.
Agenda item. Well, that has the whole, you know, it's big and long, right? So I'm not gonna read that, right, that doesn't make sense. So, but if, if we wanna tweak what gets read, I am certainly open to it. I think it's, it's due for some revisions anyway, and it sounds like we've had some good ideas come out of here tonight, so.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And I do wanna, um, just remind everybody that not everybody is intimately involved with Board Book as we are, like we had, I had somebody contact me, try to contact me in the middle of a meeting on my personal email saying, how do I make a public comment? And I just went back and forth with this person and I said, well, do you see this when you look at Board Book? And he's like, you have to understand, I've never seen this interface before in my life.
I was looking at that today, there's a, that's a barrier.
Well, and when we were on Zoom, that was the only way to get.
Correct, I know, I know.
Yeah, I mean, the, the person probably would've showed up in public if they, if they could've and then that would've been much more obvious as what, what, what to do, right? Um, so anyway, just something to keep in mind that not everybody knows the nitty gritty of, you know, looking at things off, I mean, it's, I still am learning, so.
No, I agree, and that's why, I think that's why reading it matters. It's sort of like what Scott talked about around the working agreement, but it sets the stage, right? This is what our expectations are, if you'd like to address the board. I, I think what it sounds like we have is, is broad agreement that some tweaks are necessary.
Yeah.
If the two of you want to, uh, bring back an update, we can discuss it again and we can tweak it until we're happy and, and adopt it.
Sounds great.
Okay.
That's, Janet, does that work?
Perfect. Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Okay. Uh, you get, I mean, you guys heard all the comments and conversation tonight and, uh, just take those things into account. Uh, if you, uh, you know, send out a draft ahead of our next meeting, we can have it as a discussion item and if we get to a point where we're satisfied, we can have a motion and a vote. And if we don't, we, it can wait, you know, for another meeting until we're, we're satisfied.
Yeah, that's great. What do you think of, uh, the bottom section where it has the cross-reference to policy? Do you like that or not? I need to hear from you. Or is there something that was missed?
Well, as long as it's accurate, I totally appreciate it, uh, because oftentimes, you know, we know there's a policy somewhere, but don't remember the number or the letter or whatever. Um, so to me, it seems helpful, except for if there are updates. Well, I guess it doesn't, one thing I, I guess I get concerned about when we try to cross-reference too many things is that if there's a change in one thing and then do you have to go back and change the reference in the other document? And I don't know if that's an issue here, but it's just something I, I thought of.
Yeah, I, I think when we talked about it in the policy work group, it, it's not going to be, it was only for this document. I don't know if it makes any difference, um, in that if we update one of those policies, we can double check to see if it still applies or if it's been folded into another policy. Is that what you're kind of concerned about?
Yeah, and maybe it doesn't matter in this case, but that would be my concern is that, you know, you, are you gonna remember to go back and look at this to make the change?
Oh, I see.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and see, the, one of the questions I guess I have is, are we drafting something to be read or something to be posted or both? Cause like, there may be a distinction between that, right? We have a policy, that's very detailed.
Right.
We may wanna have, I'll call it an intermediary document that lives on Board Book on the agenda item that sort of summarizes the policy and has, you know, here's how you ask to speak or whatever. And then there's what gets read. And I think the what gets read probably is the shortest of the three, right? So if, you know, for example, if this document has a bunch of cross-reference, I'm, clearly I wouldn't read all of that, right?
No.
No, right, so.
Right.
I mean, as it stands, if, if it's as verbose as what I see here, it's too long, I think, to read. I mean, it's, it's almost a full sheet, so it would, it's all good information, but, you know, it just kinda feel like I'd be droning on, so.
Now, can it be used just like we have our ORSs, um, referenced, uh, throughout policy and stuff? Would it be just like this is? I think my point was, and, you know, I, I, I would like to hear from the others, but it's just a nice little reminder that we're just not reading something that was arbitrarily cooked up. But it did come from threads of our policy that we work around and in. That was my thought process behind it, but if you're finding it, that it might cause, um, some hiccups, I, I'm all for removing it. Yeah, if, I, yeah, that's why I'm giving it to you guys, cause I just wanna hear from you.
No, I mean, that'd be my feedback, is that I just, I wanna make sure what gets read doesn't have people falling backward in their chair, right?
Okay, right.
I wanna make sure it's engaging, I guess is the right word, so that it makes sense, but it's, you know, I learned a long time ago, uh, concise is often more, much more effective. So that is one of, I guess, the pieces, I just wanna make sure. I don't mind, I wanna be clear, I don't mind if we have either an update to our policy proposed, which this isn't, or a document that lives on Board Book under the public comment agenda item that references the policy and summarizes who you email or how to raise your hand and, I mean, like if we want that document, that's fine too. I'm just suggesting that the portion that would be read, I think, needs to be more concise than.
Okay.
The, the policy that jumps out at me is being, I'm sorry, as, as being kind of the, one of the more important ones to reference, maybe even in the shorter version that you read, is the complaint policy. Because it, it always concerns me a little bit that people are gonna start saying names of whoever they're annoyed with, and I think it's important for people to understand that you can't do that, it's not appropriate, it's not okay. There is actually a complaint policy, uh, whether we call it out as K L A R or not, you know, we can talk about. But it's one of those things that I think is helpful for people to understand. We're not just ignoring you, we're not saying you don't have a voice, there is an actual way to do this that is appropriate, so I think that's one example of something that is helpful for folks to understand.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, definitely.
Very good.
Well, I completely agree that whatever you read is, is gotta be fairly short. I mean, I just know the psychology of people that, especially people that maybe are upset or that it's a tense situation, they're testifying in public and, you know, they probably aren't even hearing what you're saying, um, all the time, but, and then I agree with Lori that the cross-references to the larger document are important to be there. It really grounds us and makes us think about, you know, why, why is testimony, you know, three minutes? And why is, and if somebody ever wants to ask, that gives us a place to, you know, we can support why we, why we're doing what we do.
Yeah. So maybe it sound, I, I'm hearing that there's two, there's either two documents that we're gonna draft or something to that effect. It sounds like there's two, there's sort of.
Well, you can have it all in one.
I can do that.
And just have a line.
And just read the one part.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a special section in the one that gets read. That I'm, that'd be, I'd be fine with that as well.
Oh, okay.
I think reducing the number of items that we have is always a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, no, that would be fine too. Okay. Any other comments on public comment? All right.
I have a comment on the room setup, can I make that?
Yep.
This is my first time. Herb's not with us, but there's a thing called urbanomics.
Right.
That we, I, I wanna suggest that we think about. So, A, we, you know, Daniel came out and said, you need to speak into the microphone.
Right.
Well, it would be a whole lot easier for me to be closer to my microphone if I was talking to somebody that was across the way.
Exactly.
And it would be so much easier to feel like we are having a meeting in public if we were actually looking at each other instead of at the audience. So, um, I just wanna suggest that, and I know that, that there might be some technical difficulties with the whole camera setup, but just wanna, just put it out there that it might be preferable for us to be able to see each other a little bit better.
Bring the wing.
Just know, Jennifer, we, we talked about that this morning.
Urbanomics.
Oh, nice.
Yes, about having a circle. Circles are far better than rows, uh, far better than a ninety-degree angle here. Uh, so it really was around getting the technology right before we start working on configurations. So I totally agree with you on that.
Awesome.
Very good point.
Thank you for letting me say that.
No, it's important that we get this right.
Love it.
Yeah.
Also, just, just know that one of the topics we've talked about as far as future meetings is that we will always be in here too. So we may have, you know, different setup challenges in different locations. Something to keep in mind also about how many different locations we consider is trying to make sure that they're conducive to conversation.
Yes, and so i- if we, if, if and when we do that, not if, but when we do that, we will have made sure that, that there won't be barriers to conversations. We know that that's really, really important and, and, uh, you know, the technology's hard to get right. But, but our goal is to develop some sort of a mobile system like we have here, but that we can take to different areas. I think it's really important in a district as diverse as, uh, Silver Falls with the types of facilities issues that we have, that we actually meet in the places uh, that, that we have concerns about. I think it's really, really important and shows the public that we do care about all of our facilities, not just the, the, this beautiful environment here.
Right.
It also is accessible as you move around. I love the idea that we were, you know, when we bounced around to the different schools, I, I think it, it creates a good opportunity to engage more people.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, before we move off the topic of public comment, I meant to, to say that, um, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I would really like to encourage people to attend in person if they have important comments to make. I found it difficult at our last meeting to, you know, really hear everything that was said. Um, I don't know if that was our technology or their technology or a combination thereof, but, um, I just think that if they can do it in person, it's gonna be, uh, easier to, to hear what they're saying.
That's a great point. I had the same challenge with one in particular last week.
Yeah, and I, um, I agree with that. I know that sometimes when someone comments and then there's the conversations after the room, you can have a follow-up conversation with that person and it's, it just, you can get more conversation.
Yep.
You know, there's the, there's the, there's been lots of good discussions in the parking lots after these meetings.
Yeah.
Or the sidewalk. Face of the stairs, so.
Right, huh?
Yeah. Well, and I do think that, um, our hybrid meetings here, I mean, have, I was impressed that last time it went so well, considering it was the first time, so.
Yeah.
Good job, Daniel.
I think Daniel mentioned that, I think a hundred or a hundred ten people have watched the, the last board meeting.
Oh, wow.
That's what he, he mentioned, so.
That's great.
A lot of people are accessing that online, the recording.
Yes, and Daniel, I did notice that you got it up on YouTube really quickly and I think everybody appreciates that, so thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, anything else on public comment or urbanomics?
Urbanomics, I love it.
All right, well, without objection, meeting adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.